Good evening. My name is Brandon Monk and I'm the chairman of the Frederick County School Board. I'd like to thank everyone who's joined us for this evening's meeting and through the livestream on the School Division's YouTube channel. Unfortunately, the restrooms at the administration building are unavailable for use this evening due to construction. Those who need to use the restroom may utilize the facilities outside the doors to my right, or use the restrooms at James Wood Middle School, or use the restrooms at the school. You should enter the school through the doors next to the cafeteria, under the canopy, at the parent pickup/drop-off area. The restrooms located in the front hallway of the school are available for use and we sincerely apologize for the inconvenience. With that, we'll go ahead and we'll have a moment of silence. Please join me. Thank you. We have an agenda before us. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the agenda.
A motion's been made and seconded. To approve the agenda as presented, all in favor of doing so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and we have an agenda. Please join me in a pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The board has a consent agenda before it, which includes approval of minutes, use of school property and student trips. What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right, there's a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of approving the consent agenda that's before us signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that has been approved. Now's the time for our citizen and staff comments. The Frederick County School Board is pleased to receive public comments at each monthly meeting. In order to allow the board sufficient time for its other business, the total time allotted for public comment will generally be limited to 20 minutes. Individuals speaking to the board will be allotted three minutes. Those individuals representing groups or organizations will be allotted five minutes with one representative per group. Upon recognition by the chair, the speaker should clearly state their name, residing district and subject of their comments. All comments are to be addressed to the chair. The board will receive comments but will not respond to questions or engage in dialogue. This is an opportunity to be heard and the board will refer any issues or concerns to staff or appropriate committees. The school board is committed to showing appropriate respect and courtesy to all citizens and speakers are expected to show appropriate respect and courtesy to the board in kind. Members of the audience are not permitted to interrupt the speaker or meeting by asking questions or comments. School board meetings are taped, recorded for the purpose of clarification and development of the official minutes. With that, we'll move to our first speaker, who is Kristy Scarborough.
Hello, board members. My name is Kristy Scarborough of the Stonewall District. Ellen, I FOIA requested your text messages and Steve, I know you have your name placarded as Steve Edwards, but we all know that that's not your real last name, so Steve Cornwell informed me that your phone deletes your text messages after 30 days. I anticipate you've corrected that. At the last meeting, I spoke about Steve Edwards using a fake last name. Since then, Vernon Bach conducted an investigation into the matter, which was weird considering he was already aware that Steve Edwards uses a fake last name. As a matter of fact, both Vernon Bach and David Savine have known of Steve's true identity and yet they accommodate Steve by allowing him to use a fake name. My main issue with this is that it's very misleading for a county employee to not inform the public of his true identity. If you want to use your fake name, by all means, go ahead, but at the least issue a public statement that your real name is Steve Cornwell and that you just prefer to be called Steve Edwards. Now, Mr. Cornwell, you are the FOIA officer for Frederick County Public Schools. Recently, I requested the invoices of Frederick County School Board to the firm Botkin Rose. Not only was I shocked to see that within three months Frederick County Public Schools has had 57 separate legal charges, accumulating to well over $30,000 of taxpayers' dollars, but that seven of those charges were FOIA-related. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, but you had to go through training to become a FOIA officer. When you, where, sorry, where you learned the requirements and duties of a FOIA officer and yet you are wasting taxpayers' dollars for legal counsel regarding FOIAs. If I didn't know any better, I'd say we needed a new FOIA officer, one that has a clear understanding of his job duties and what he can and can't do, one that doesn't rely on outside legal counsel to tell him what he should already know. In other words, a competent FOIA officer is what Frederick County Public Schools needs. In closing, I'd like to see a reform of Frederick County Public Schools in the form of some replacements. For instance, I would like to see someone else in David Savine's spot and Vernon Bach's spot and Steve Cornwell's spot. I'll even include Apple Pie Ridge Elementary School Principal Megan Dodd. Each of you have proven to not be capable in your positions. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jessica Jenkins.
Good evening. Okay, I'm going to begin with quoting an email from Mr. McCarthy. The quote is, "As a matter of fact, School Board Chairman Monk called both Supervisor Slaughter and Chairman DeHaven and asked them to join us in voting for Scenario C, but those supervisors chose to vote for A instead. Mr. Monk, as the representative for my district, who I have supported, I would like to ask you why you made these calls. I can see advocating for the 2.1 over $22 million if there was no other option, but there is the option to vote for Option A and that is what we need to be advocating for. It seems the budget cuts are a no-win situation with how the school board will have to handle it. On one hand, we cut the much-needed extra pay for special education teachers, aides, etc. On the other hand, we cut new teaching positions that we need in our already overcrowded schools. Either option can lead to IEPs not being properly met, which can turn to lawsuits. I am sharing with you my son's IEP, which is a binding contract with Frederick County Public Schools. My son is one of many children that have an IEP within this school system. The reason that I am sharing this is so that you have, that you can understand how this works and how many people are involved in this process. Some community members seem to think that we are full of it when we talk about the possible consequences, but I promise you, we are not. We know exactly what will happen to our kids' education because we live this battle for our kids every day. I am not here as part of Savine's army blindly following anyone. As of two years ago, I could not have even told you the first thing about special education or even been to a school board meeting, but things have changed. I am here because I am my kids' army. I am this kid's army. Just because it doesn't affect your kids doesn't mean it can't still be an attack on ours. I will offer in this room, or to anyone in this room who does not understand why our teachers are so important, especially in special education, an open invitation right now for you to come and spend some time with me and my children. Talk to us. See how in over 11 years the school changes have made positive changes for my kids. See how people stare at my special needs son and make comments about me bringing him in public because they do not understand him. See how much one child needs and see why these teachers are burned out and need not only better pay but physical help in the classrooms. And I'm sorry, this is a very sensitive situation for me and I just want y'all to look at this again. This matters to him. I'm sorry. Thank you."
Thank you, Ms. Jenkins. Our next speaker will be Amy Williams.
Good evening, board. What a week it's been since the Board of Supervisors meeting and a lot of information's come out. We've learned a lot. But I'd like to start with the positives that we've learned. First of all, thank you to Ellen White for getting information out there about the budget and providing it to the public, who has been misled about information that we're giving too much money to the school's. Knowledge is power. Thank you to Mr. Hester, Mr. Comstock for speaking and urging the supervisors to fully fund the budget. And thank you to Mr. Lake because I know the hard work you do behind the scenes. And now to the, to our board members who don't appear to support our schools. Ms. Martin, you were elected to make decisions for our schools. Why can't you support the needs of our schools, their children, the children there and their teachers? To call on the county to be frugal and speak out against a fourth high school at the joint meeting does not meet those needs. Mr. Adkins, I know you didn't vote to support the budget initially. I just honestly don't remember why. So I would like to hear your reason at a later time. But more importantly, I see posts that you make about CRT and it seems that you are persistently pursuing this idea of CRT indoctrination in our schools and we have kids. And trust me, if CRT was being taught, we would be putting it out there of what we're seeing. My stepdaughter is a freshman at James Wood and I have point-blank asked her if she is having any assignments, like they have been reported from Fairfax about privilege. Nothing. And we don't see anything coming in from our third grader that would worry us. And two of your fellow board members told Mr. McCarthy that CRT is not happening. And lastly, Mr. Monk, I think you owe parents and teachers an explanation of why you were making what looks like backroom deals with three supervisors and calling others, encouraging them to vote for Option C. Why would you undercut a budget that you voted for, especially when the county has excess funds? Cheryl Schifler reported to us that after the county sets aside $35 million in savings and $26 million transferred to the capital fund, there is still an excess of $6 million to fully fund school needs, transportation and fire and rescue. These cuts hit home because our son receives special education services. Our special education staff deserves that pay incentive. I've seen firsthand their hard work and dedication. There are 1,939 students who receive special ed services and we're already in short supply of those teachers. Your actions will push these teachers to other counties if this budget isn't fully funded. If we lose them, IEPs won't be met and your decisions will be hindering a federally protected program. The next domino move will be lawsuits. Is that what you want? Can I finish? I have like two sentences.
Sure.
When we lose special ed teachers, our general education teachers will be overwhelmed, more overwhelmed. 103 teachers resigned last year. How many more will follow? The poor decisions will follow you to the next election. There are more of us who support public education than those who agree with radical agendas in defunding our schools.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Our next speaker is Laura Gerald.
Good evening. My name is Laura Gerald and I'm a resident of the Opecan District. I have lived here for almost eight years and have become involved with school and budget issues over the last few years. I have learned quite a bit. They say that knowledge is power, so I will be using my newfound powers to advocate for our schools for a long time to come. As we were coming into the budget process for the FY '23 budget, I knew we would have an uphill battle for full funding with the Board of Supervisors. What I didn't expect was that our own school board chair would be missing in action and silent throughout this entire process. Parents and staff have showed up at the Board of Supervisors meeting on March 27th for the public hearing on the budget. Numerous people spoke urging the Board of Supervisors to fully fund the school's needs-based budget, which passed the school board by a vote of six to one. There was one person obviously missing at that meeting, you, Mr. Chairman. This was your opportunity to stand up and publicly advocate on behalf of the school board's proposed budget. Instead, you chose to observe from home. Then on April 13th, when the Board of Supervisors was supposed to vote on the budget, you again were missing. Fortunately, Mr. Comstock and Mr. Hester were there to advocate for full funding. It was your job as chairman to also be present and actively advocate on the school's behalf. Instead, we heard about private conversations between you and McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy also shared that you contacted Chairman DeHaven and Ms. McCann Slaughter to urge them to support Scenario C under the guise of consensus. Your job, Mr. Chairman, is not to push for consensus. Your job is to advocate to the best of your ability for the absolute best for our staff and students. You have failed. You remained behind the scenes in dealings with which were anything but transparent. Funny since transparency has been the buzzword this budget season. I urge you to reflect on your actions and how they are perceived by those you purportedly represent. I also urge you between now and April 27th to publicly advocate for Scenario A and to show up at the meeting on April 27th to speak on behalf of our staff and students. If you do not show up and publicly advocate for Scenario A, you are solidifying the perception that we all now have that you are not working your hardest and best for the staff and students of Frederick County. I'll be at the meeting to support full funding. I hope to see you there.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kristy Jett.
My name is Kristy Jett. I'm a resident of Gainesboro. To the school board members who have been consistently and publicly speaking in favor of the full school budget, Mr. Lake, Mr. Hester, Ms. White, thank you. We see you and we applaud you. Thank you for speaking up as you can on social media, in the newspaper, at Board of Supervisors meetings. Every public statement makes a splash and together splashes make waves. To the school board members who have remained silent, we see you too. You may not agree with how money is being spent in the budget and that's fine. That is your job, actually. But that is not the battle we're fighting right now. Right now, our job is to get the schools fully funded. After the budget passes, you can debate all you want the merits of where those dollars are going. But first, we need a budget. Save your disagreements for after the budget passes. Work to get the schools fully funded. And to Mr. Monk, it is your prerogative to have discussions with the supervisors, even private ones, but your job as chairman of the school board is to represent the interests of the board in those discussions. I learned at last week's Finance Committee meeting that you had requested to restrict communication between the boards to yourself. I further learned, you please correct me later, I further learned that this was a surprise to some members of the board. The boards are not at war. We are not parlaying in the middle of a battlefield. We are not negotiating the terms of engagement. There has been a lot of discussion about transparency and trust. How does restricting communication promote the interests of the schools or build a relationship of trust? Such behavior sows distrust and deviates from what we as citizens expect from our local elected officials and to be frank with what your fellow board members should expect from their chair. The consensus that you should care about is the consensus of the school board and that was to pass a fully funded school budget six to one. That is the only message you should take with you behind closed doors.
Thank you. Our next speaker is William Schaefer.
Hi, my name's William Schaefer of the Shawnee District. School Board of Nassau County, Florida, v. Arlene, the Supreme Court ruled a teacher with a communicable disease, in this case tuberculosis, is considered handicapped under Section 504 of the American with Disabilities Act. Section 504 states that protections are granted to those with a perceived disability or those treated as having a disability. While parents and students spoke at these very meetings, begging to end the violations of civil rights, not a teacher one was here standing up for them. Once we started talking about money, teachers flooded the boardrooms, all claiming to be in here for the kids. If it were up to me, FCPS would not see a single dime until those responsible for, enforced or condoned the policies responsible for separating students from their peers, not providing an appropriate education equal to that of their peers, changing the customary times which food is served in violation of VA Code 22.1-279.1, suspending due process as stated in Virginia Administrative Code 20-81-210 and 504 and IEP plan violations. By the way, if the full budget is approved and personal property taxes go up as projected, any teacher that owns a $200,000 home, your raise is gone.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jennifer Gale. Jennifer Gale? Gaylor, sorry. Just trails off at the end, so.
Sorry. My name is Jennifer Gaylor and I'm a resident of the Shawnee District. The last several weeks have been exhausting and frustrating for many in this community. Many people here, myself included, believe in the board that, believe in the budget that this board sent to the Board of Supervisors by a vote of six to one. As the board president of a local nonprofit, I'm familiar with being in a boardroom discussing a potentially contentious vote. There are disagreements, compromises and finally, consensus. My job as the president is to understand where everyone is coming from, help bridge the gaps and get us to as close as unanimous as we can. Because once you step out of that boardroom, every board member needs to represent that organization and be prepared to publicly support the decisions of that organization. The same is true for this board and this budget vote. Once you all stepped out of that budget meeting, when you voted six to one to fully fund the schools, as elected officials, your job was to publicly represent the students of the school district, not your own interests. I want to thank the members of this board who have shown up to the Board of Supervisors meetings and have spoken publicly about supporting our teachers and students. That is all of your jobs. The last thing this community wants is to talk about cuts to our schools and where they need to be made. You all should be working very hard at advocating for this board's budget because the community, whenever you are in public, because the community is watching. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Karen Dredsky.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members, Dr. Savine. Tonight, I wanted to take a few minutes and just thank all of you for your time, especially with all the energy and all the extra effort and work that you've had to do with dealing with the budget. I know we're close to it being finalized at some point next week and it's going to be what it's going to be, but I most especially want to put out a personal thank you to someone that we've heard Dr. Savine and Mr. Hester and a few others say thank you to and recognize in the past and that's Mrs. Camery. She is amazing. She does so much and I know that she is the reason that all of you have been able to do what you've been doing in order to try to get our budget approved. And I just wanted to let you know, Mrs. Camery, the parents out here appreciate you too, especially those of us who've been through the FCPS 101 training and know how much time and effort you put into making this, not just your reports even here at the meetings, so that someone with an accounting or finance background would understand, but that those of us without it can understand it also. We really appreciate that. Now, this New Year's been crazy. It's been new all right and we've had a couple of crazy years. We've got some new board members and we've got new interactions with the Board of Supervisors and change is good, but change is really hard. And I just want to say that even though it's not easy sometimes for change and in this case, the topics are sometimes tough, that we all have different ideas, different opinions, but it's all really good. And in the end, we're going to be able to make some real changes that I think are going to be beneficial in the long run. I want to ask all of you to please keep an open mind to the changes that are being requested by the Board of Supervisors with the budget process. And while it seems like it's new and some of it is a real pain in the butt, and I understand that, I've attended quite a few of the Board of Supervisor meetings recently and this year so far, I feel like there is a willingness for all of the board to support our school district. One of the things that I understand that they're asking for is some historical information, which I think is probably easier coming from our systems anyway than to ask them to go dig through stuff and put it together because I know we have to have a system that brings in reporting information. And I'd like to ask all of you, as this budget year wraps up and the next, planning for the next school year starts and the future budget, to start thinking about the different way that we could potentially take advantage of what the Board of Supervisors is asking for. And I would like to ask you all to think about next year presenting to the Board of Supervisors a budget that does tell them what it would take to have an A1 school district. Include things like the 13 new buses that we need a year and some new band instruments for our students at the different schools. for our students at the different schools, improvements that are needed that are not included in current renovations that are going on, our fourth high school, of course, and most importantly, something Mr. Atkins brought up a couple of meetings ago, making everything right with salaries for all of our faculty and staff and bringing that up to date. Because the Board of Supervisors can't plan, even if they don't, even if they say no. If you come in with a list of priorities and you explain to them what we're trying to do, they'll know what it's going to take in the future to get us there. So, thank you all for everything you do.
Thank you, Ms. Dredsky. Our next speaker will be Katie Bockert.
Hi, my name is Katie Bockert. I'm an aide at Robert E. Ailer Middle School. I spoke last week to the Board of Supervisors about the importance of the Virginia Standards of Quality and how important it is for Frederick County to fund the budget and follow those standards. This evening, I'm here to ask the school board to please not cut the small increase in pay that Dr. Sovine has declared in his budget for the instructional aides. Since my employment with Frederick County Public Schools, the instructional aides have not made a living wage. The majority of the individuals that are in these positions have loved ones at home who provide the majority of their income because this position is not one that one can live on. The starting salary is $12.40 or $86.80 a day or $15,710 a year. Let's be real, there are high schoolers making way more money at McDonald's flipping burgers than these individuals who have important responsibilities working with the children and young adults in these schools in Frederick County. I'm aware that there are members on this board who do not have the faintest idea of what an aide does in a classroom. So, I thought I might give you an idea of what it is that my amazing coworkers do on a, on a day-to-day basis. The first amazing instructional aide I want to mention is Donna Affleck. She has been with Frederick County Public Schools for almost 24 years. Her whole working career has been at Robert E. Ailer and with no disrespect whatsoever, she knows the math curriculum of the sixth and seventh grade better than any of the new hired teachers that you're going to have for next year. And if you need a student that have a one-to-one in learning on a math concept, just like Ghostbusters, who are you going to call? Donna Affleck, that's who, because she will get the job done. But don't let me underestimate her superpower. That woman knows just about the entire curriculum of both sixth and seventh grade combined. And that's why any great sped administrator puts her in a class with multiple students to keep them on task and up to date with their work. She is not alone. Many great aides work in our building and it takes more than one. We have children with emotional issues, behavior issues, learning issues. Lindsay Posniak is another amazing instructional aide who is able to help a student with her calming demeanor, warm voice to complete necessary classroom tasks. So, there's this one student that does not bring an entire classroom to a halt with an emotional outburst. It's with her hard work that she keeps him on task and running and continues the learning process while the teacher runs her classroom. This same, this same aide is a mom and I know right now she's at home working on her paper to get her teaching degree at night. Then there's a newer face in our aides at Ailer, not new to working with children, but new to our classrooms, Lori Marble. In her first year, in her time going from a church preschool to a full-time aide, the teacher bug bit her too. And not only does she deal with students who have learning difficulties that act out in class, which is often, may I please finish, which often tend to need to be reined in by the teacher and herself, but she does lots of other stuff out of the class, one-to-one with group sessions, and these students get the benefit of her one-to-one with smaller group learning. Then, the last one that I want to mention is the most amazing, my friend Kathy Russell. She's the most amazing of all. When a student in class has broken the rules or had an outburst or disrupted or a fight, what do you think the administration and teachers do with that student all day? Do you think they sit with a licensed teacher who has 119 other students to do with? Do you think they sit with the administrator who has multiple duties all day? No, they put them with an, with an instructional aide. In our building, it's called ISA. Kathy Russell runs the ISA where the students are sent to reflect on the choices that they've made and why they're there. Most of the students who go there are very diligent and they respect the reason why they're there, but as you can guess, if they choose, I'm sorry, if they realize what they're there, but if they don't, it's this woman, Kathy Russell, who has a great and warm attitude who has to deal with it. All these people and even more are in every one of your buildings. Please, 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 don't cut the instructional aides' benefits. Please.
Thank you, Ms. Bockert. Our next speaker will be Shanique W. Williams.
Good evening, Chairman Monk, school board members, and Dr. Sovine. My name is Shanique W. Williams and I reside in the Shawnee District. I also have the privilege of serving as the president of the Frederick County Education Association. Before I read my remarks, I just wanted to note that these remarks come directly from polled members. I sat over the last week and called members from every building to ask them their opinions of what's going on and it resonates with me strongly that these parents and community members are here saying some of the same similar things that I'm about to say today. When I considered addressing this elected board, I struggled with what would be most appropriate and most meaningful. I wondered if the voices in this room, including my own, would trigger a change in response, a change in behavior, or fall to the wayside. So, consider this a message of support of your proposed budget and intervention of sorts for those who need it. A forced moment of reflection. FCA supports this board's budget. We support and appreciate the board members who have publicly supported this board's budget. So, please, take a moment, be accountable and reflective of your actions. Have you truly done all that you can to support our students? Your silence and non-support of the budget is a reflection of your values and is honestly very telling. So, take a moment, think about the educators of this district who are watching you and feel let down by your actions. You should be doing everything you can to connect with your colleagues on the Board of Supervisors, to get them to understand the intricacies of the school budget and the state requirements connected to funding. You should be doing everything in your power to quell the misinformation that is being spread by some people who elected you to these roles. Your silence in not doing so is deafening. To some of you, I ask, are you here to support the students and educators of our county? Because if so, you would be advocating for the budget. You would be advocating for the budget. This is not an ask, but a requirement of your position. I ask you, why have you been silent? Now, really, about the initial budget before projected cuts to counter potential shortfalls from Frederick County local and any from the Richmond office, it was designed in a way that would have given educators a chance to stay, a reason to stay, when locals around us are surpassing us in pay. Retention of highly qualified staff has been a goal for yours for a while, but things are changing with your cuts, potential cuts, and these cuts do not move us forward. FCA knows that your hands are tied and limited to the funding that you receive from our local government, which is why I circle back. Are you willing to do what it takes to correct misinformation and publicly advocate for the schools and the school's budget? Are you willing to vehemently support our students and the educators of this county? Because honestly, anything less is disheartening. This is about what is best for students, not what is best for political groups. Recognizing the educators of this county directly benefits our students. What do you think is best for students? I ask you to consider this in closing. Are you what is best for our community? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Our next speaker is Jodi Yegi.
My name is Jodi Yegi and I'm a member of the Redbud District. Project-based learning, probably all heard that term. It's the basis for prepping our children for the world. Regardless of their future roles, working with a team to solve problems will be at the root of their daily lives. Every single day, I work with individuals, from people in manufacturing roles, to supply chain, to marketing, to sales, and it's all the same, how we can solve a problem together. We have ideas, we brainstorm, we push and pull each other, then we come to a solution and we work together to get it implemented. That is why we're prepping our children for futures, for their future through project-based learning. I worked in corporate America and I've led teams. I've led a Sunday School program and I've served on a school board. While I was on the board, I didn't agree with everything and everyone didn't agree with me, but we worked together for a common goal, students. Boardsmanship starts with leadership. It means keeping your entire board in the know, communicating, sharing ideas, and working towards solutions. Project-based learning in action, if you will. Leadership also means advocating. It is why I show up day after day and sit through these meetings, because I believe in our students and I really think you all should too. The fact that we have only seen or heard public support for a school board budget passed by your board from four of the seven board members is sad. Over 15 members of the community showed up and fought for our children and staff and teachers at the recent Board of Supervisors meeting, yet there's been zero public comment from our board chair. Mr. Monk, tonight, I hope that you tell us exactly how you have been advocating for our children. Then, I hope to see a public statement in the paper from you as chair of the board, explaining to the supervisors why they should pass Option A, the needs-based budget that your board passed. And finally, I hope to see you at Wednesday night's meeting, telling the supervisors in person why they should pass their budget because the county has the funds for both education and roads with no increase in taxes. See you there.
Thanks, Ms. Yegi. Our next speaker is Martha Sparkman.
My name is Martha Sparkman. I live in the Redbud District. I love vocabulary. My mother taught us that once we had mastered a subject, then we got to play with it. I chose English. There's something of humor, there's something of teaching, there's something of learning. There's something of a word that keeps getting thrown around, transparency. Yes, we want to know where all the tax money is going. That's kind of our right and I really look forward to having some access to a very detailed budget. Love to read that. I want to know where the money's going. I want to know whom it's helping. Notice I said whom, I remember that. And anyone who is very, very proud of their accounting skills and their departments and all should have absolutely zero problem providing details. Zero. Also, speaking of words, I understand that when a budget is submitted, it is a budget proposal, it is, what's the word that they keep on saying? The request, budget request. And that, that word seems to be morphing into funded and then fully funded, but it was request. Now, what's the difference? You look over what you see as needs, see what you see as wants, and say, okay, make out a plan and you submit that. Maybe you padded it a little bit, just in case you need some extra paper products or something, but it's pretty, it's pretty good. And then you're told, well, there isn't money enough to do this. So, what do you do? Just slice something down? The thing that I have heard over and over and over and over, I think that the Latin is ad infinitum, that if we don't fully fund all of this, it will be a disaster for this section, this section, or the entire schools. When this is, it's not a cut that, that you're doing, this is, I want to call it negotiations. Okay, we want this much? Well, I can give you this much. Well, we can do this. And instead of having a, I think a productive, productive conversation about this and debate, it's turned into an adversarial thing, I hope. And I yes, beg of you that you will just let people know and stop hiding. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is David Sparkman.
Chairman of the board, I'm David Sparkman, Redbud District. I ran across a very important quote in my study of the Enlightenment period of history. Emmanuel Kant said to be enlightened meant to be able to make your own decisions, be educated enough that you don't have to be told what is right and what is wrong. That is enlightenment. We've been told a lot of things recently that are wrong. We're being kind of led around by what I would refer to as Napoleon's puppies, for any of you who happens to know that expression. Everybody's saying, well, we got to do this, we got to do that. You're not taking the whole picture into account. As of last year enrollment time, seven and a half percent of the county students were enrolled in homeschooling. I have not yet been able to determine how many are enrolled in private schooling. I do know that the school board here does not support either one of those groups, so you cannot say that you are supporting education in this county. You're supporting public education in this county. Now, I'm under the impression from those people I've spoken to is that the private schooling is going to be expanding quite a bit next year. Why? Because parents disagree with what you are deciding. That's why. Nothing else, very plain and simple, parents don't like what you are doing in public school. That's why they go elsewhere if they possibly can. Now, this misinformation, of course, says, well, if we don't have enough money, we're going to lay off teachers first. How come? Teachers are your most critical thing. If my budget gets cut, do I lay off eating food? No. I find other things to cut. Pet projects, for example. Oh, we don't teach CRT. No, we teach CRT Lite, also known as Deep Equity. And yes, you do teach Deep Equity, you bought the manuals for it, you have an administrator for it. So, admit it, let's get back to what the teachers want to do that are afraid to express themselves. Let's get back to what the parents want. Take a chunk out of that homeschooling and private schooling and bring them back to public schools by offering them what they want. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sparkman. Appreciate the public comment. Our next item on the agenda was the approval of minutes, which we've done through our consent agenda, and that brings us to the report of the superintendent of schools, Dr. Sovine.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'd like to remind parents, students, and school-based staff to take the School Quality and Perception Survey. A survey which was launched on April the 4th remains open through April the 29th. Students in grades five through 12 will be given the opportunity to complete the survey at school. Parents and school-based employees should check their email for an invitation and survey link. All responses to, to the survey are strictly confidential and anonymous. Additional information is available on the school division's website. Also, I'd like to invite students and parents to attend the I'm Determined Spotlight that will be held this Saturday, April the 23rd, from 10:00 to 11:30 a.m. at Robert E. Ailer Middle School. Attendees will hear from James Wood High School student Ashley James, who is the student representative- Wood High School student Ashley James, who is the Student Representative on the Special Education Advisory Committee, and learn how students of all ages and abilities can be active participants in the IEP process. Additional information, including the link to the registration form, is available on the School Division's website. And lastly, I want to just thank this board for your commitment to continuous learning. Tomorrow is the second school board, full-day school board training session. It will be held at Robert E., or, excuse me, it will be held at Jordan Springs Elementary School, and will start at 8:00 a.m. Our focus for the, the spring school board training session is on instruction, teaching and learning. You'll have opportunities to work with our instructional staff and our teachers, to interact with students, and our focus will be on giving you an opportunity to see how our teachers work with our students to bring our strategic plan, Inspired 2025, to life. So, once again, we, we thank you. It is a meeting that is open to the public. Once again, it starts at 8:00 o'clock and will be held at Jordan Springs Elementary School. So, once again, thank, extend my appreciation, appreciation to this board for your engagement, and, most importantly, your commitment to our children and teaching and learning.
Thank you, Dr. Savine. Next, we have the Assistant Superintendent for Administration. Mr. Box, please. We have Ms. Rittenhour this evening. Ms. Rittenhour.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Savine, members of the board. The membership report this evening is for the enrollment from March 31st, 2022. Since the last report to you on February 28th, our enrollment decreased from 14,006 students to 13,992 students, a decrease of 14 students. The most notable decreases were eight students at Shorando High School and five students each at James Wood High School, Millbrook High School, and Greenwood Mill Elementary School. The most notable increase in enrollment were seven students at Evendale Elementary and five students at Red Bud Run Elementary. The grade level that saw the most significant in enrollment since my last report was ninth grade, with a decrease of eight students, followed closely by 11th grade with a decrease of seven students. The grade level that saw the most notable increases were kindergarten and first, first grade with three students each. We have several schools that are currently over enrollment capacity. Those schools are as follows. James Wood High School is currently at 112%. Millbrook High School, 113%. Shorando High School, 118%. Armel Elementary School, 112%. Bass Hoover Elementary School, 105%. Jordan Springs Elementary, 104%. And Middletown Elementary is at 109% over capacity. This concludes my enrollment report.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Rittenhour? Thank you so much. All right, that'll move us to unfinished business, of which there is none, new business. We have several proposed bylaw amendments before us, and as protocol for our board for bylaws, we typically do two readings of those. So, the first that we would have this evening would be the first reading of Policy 108P, School Board Bylaws for the Chair and Vice Chair Election and Duties. Any questions about that or comments as we move on to the others? Board members have received these in their, their packet, and from what Dr. Savine has shared with me, these were recommendations from VSPA. Seeing no comments there, we'd move to Policy 12P, first reading of that, School Board Bylaws, School Board Meetings. Again, this appears to be some clarification or reduction in verbiage there. Any comments or feedback as we go to the next policy?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lake.
So, a lot of these are first readings, and the ones that aren't bylaws, we actually have the option of waiving the requirement for a, and go straight to approval. Mr. Edwards?
Yes, sir, Mr. Lake. Per the board's policy, you're required to hold a first reading on bylaws.
Right.
And there's no need to suspend the rules a year or two ago, maybe longer, my memory's slipping.
Yeah.
The board changed its policy with regard to the adoption of policy that would allow you for anything other than bylaws. You can take action at the first meeting at which they're presented.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, if, if the board approves, I think, I read through all these today. I hope, I hope everybody did. I think for the remaining policies, I think we can go through that exercise, if you care.
Sure. And just clarification, Mr. Clerk, the A through F are bylaws, is that correct, on our agenda? Sorry, I caught you off guard there.
I just wanted to make sure we're on the same page.
A through, A through F.
Yes, sir. All of the policies that are in the 100 section are bylaws.
Right.
Anything that's not a 100 section, it, the board may take.
Yeah, I just want, I would just want to get out in front of this. Yes, A through F are in that category, and then after that, we can suspend.
Thank you, Mr. Lake.
Okay.
And moving to Policy 115P, the School Board Meeting, or, excuse me, Order of Business, Quorum of Rules. It would be my recommendation that we keep number eight, the approval of bills, payrolls, et cetera, just as a, you know, order of how we were to conduct business. So, that would be something that I would encourage the board to consider right now, that change, just to move that. I, I think moving the approval of the agenda to number three is, is great. Thoughts about keeping the approval of bills and payroll included in that agenda order?
Mr. Chairman, Mrs. Camery may be able to speak to this. This adjustment was made based to, to align with the board's current practice. Some years ago, bills and payroll did come forward for the board, and the process for that changed, and the board still has the ability to review that and does review that, but that does not come before the board. So, just as a matter of clarification, I wanted to make sure the board understood the rationale behind that. And again, it's at the discretion of the board, but I wanted you to know a little bit of the history behind that.
Yeah, probably back about three years ago, we used, we would send out the reports for accounts payable that you get currently, that you could look through and ask questions at the board meeting for us to answer, as well as you'd get the payroll, not the full payroll, but of course, the condensed version of that. What we've done now is just ask you to call us if you have questions. So, we just don't do it at the school board meeting. We just do it with questions. And I think every time you get those reports, it says, contact Mrs. Camery if you have questions. So, that's just what the change was.
The, the change, the change that's in the policy before you tonight reflects the board's practice for, as Ms. Camery said, probably the last two to three years. Certainly at the board's discretion, you can go back to that, but that was the rationale behind that. It's really to align the policy with what the practice has been now for a number of years.
Yeah, it's easier for, if I may, it's easier for us in finance when you call us, and we have our hands right there on the reports, to look at it, than when you ask us in a meeting, and then we're trying to, you know, flip through the reports to try to find, because we do accounts pay every two weeks, so it is a pretty large payroll and accounts payable.
Great, thank you. Transitioning then to 118P, School Board Bylaws, Special Meetings. Any feedback on 118P, School Board Bylaws and Special Meetings? All right, 120P, Policy Adoption. Sorry, trying to get there now. I did have some comments on this one, I believe, in my notes. And shared this with Dr. Savine in early conversation. I think some board members, I think the language that's there would, would love to get some clarification from the clerk, if he could reach out to VSPA of, of just the rationale for some of the language. For instance, it says it's the responsibility of the school board to adopt policies. It changes that to the school board adopts policies. Again, small, small changes, but would love to have some understanding from VSPA as to why they're recommending the language change there. Other comments on 126P? Or 120P, excuse me?
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, are you speaking of the recommended change in the first sentence there?
Correct.
I, I think that's just, to put it in more of an active voice, the, VSPA has been doing that now for some time as they go through and do that. I'm, I'm happy to contact their attorney, but that's my belief, based upon what I've seen over the last number of months and years, as they go through and review the policy manual in particular order.
Okay. And that may help answer some of my other questions about, as we move to 126P. Actually, that's a different one there now. I have a question about that active voice, I think, for another one. But 126P involves the school board member in-service activities. Pretty overhaul of that policy there. Any questions around that?
Mr. Chairman, I did, I did have a question about item B. It's 112P, School Board Meeting. So, yeah, School Board Meetings. I know, like, I've expressed concerns. I know folks out there have expressed concerns. Mr. Williams, tonight actually wanted me to answer a question, and we can't really do that right off the rip. No, I'm, I'm definitely going to answer it at the end. You know me. Anyway, but I'd like to, you know, is that going to be something where we can't change our forum? Is that something where we can't open it up to questions? Kind of like how the Board of Supervisors does their meetings, where we can answer constituent questions as they arise. I don't want anybody to get lost in the sauce, and, you know, that way we can, you know, confront any questions that arise.
Yeah, I, I think, and happy to hear other board members' perspectives, but it would be mine that, that, one, we have the opportunity in board member comments, but then additionally, kind of in those interactions that we have with, with, you know, those folks that are asked questions of us. I, I don't know that a back and forth may be the, the best opportunity to do that and, from the dais, but happy to entertain thoughts from, from other members of the board.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't, I don't favor the back and forth. I think we have, you know, a format, we have a set time, we have comments at the end. The Board of Supervisors does do that. For me personally, I'm a big fan of email, just ask, and not, not sure the big public forum, unless it is a public forum of wide-interest subject. But I prefer that, you know, like we have.
And I think one opportunity that we have too, I know I've done it a number of times, especially when Dr. Ordor was here, if there was a question related to some of the actual operation of the school, whether that be from a student or a parent, a lot of times I would just kind of follow up individually and ask staff some, to get some answers to some of those questions, just for my own information, and try to follow up with them. So, definitely some options there. I think the change here was really around special meetings specifically, and when they can be called, and what that timeline looks like, and, you know, notice that's provided to board, making sure there's appropriate notice to, to board members in case of a special meeting.
I, I believe, Mr. Chairman, that is under 118P, Special Meetings. As far as item B, though, 112, I'm not asking for a back and forth, just, you know, if somebody has a question, I'd love to answer it for them. You know, we can always follow up with an email, and to Mr. Lake's point, this is a public forum. I mean, we are talking, you know, to our constituents, and they have questions. I mean, it, it's something we can table and talk about later. Like I said, this is the first reading of it. I mean, I'm good with everything else, but that one, I, I'd like to revisit.
Sure, okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I believe the, the appropriate policy addressing what Mr. Atkins concerned would be 119P, Public Participation at Meetings. So, if the board wanted to take a look at that, that would, I believe, be the appropriate policy as opposed to 112P, just for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. All right, I think before we went back, we had just finished 126P, which would wrap up our bylaws. That would move us to Policy 429P, Students, the Prohibition Against Harassment and Retaliation. To Mr. Lake's point, this is not a bylaw, and so the board could act if it deems that appropriate. Questions about 429P or a motion?
I move that we suspend the requirement for a second reading, and therefore move to approve Policy 429P, Students, Prohibition, Prohibition Against Harassment and Retaliation. Do so move.
Second. All right, we have a motion before us, and just for the benefit of those that are listening or in the audience, the, the change here, Mr. Clerk, correct me if I'm wrong, is that we have, currently have one form that's utilized for harassment, and this would change that to where there's a student version of that form and a, a personnel version of that form. One of the major changes.
Currently, we have one form that's under the Personnel section of the policy manual. So, this minor change, what we've done, and Ms. Rittenhour has worked with me on this as well, is we've taken that form, amended it slightly, so that it can accommodate students, staff, anyone who would have a complaint to file. And then that, altering that form to be universal necessitated the need for the change to 429P that's before you, as well as the one upcoming 506P.
Thank you. Any questions before we proceed to a vote?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Atkins.
So, reading over the Policy 429P, there, I, I just want some clarity on it, and maybe, maybe it needs to be rewritten. Right there on page three, it does say, displaying sexual suggestive objects, pictures, cartoons, posters. I, I think we're all in agreement here. We don't want that from anybody at all. Is, is that, you know, going to, you know, with their sex ed class or something like that, is that going to be something where now somebody can say that's sexual harassment, because we're going through sex ed class? Is that also going to be something, you know, that can potentially get, you know, us in hot water or get those students in hot water? I, I mean, if parents don't want them to see that, I think they should have that option.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins. Dr. Angelo or Ms. Rittenhour might be able to answer kind of how that plays out.
Parents do have the opportunity to opt their children out of family life education.
All right. We have a motion before us. Any further discussion? It's been made and properly seconded. All right, let's proceed to a vote on Policy 429P, Students, Prohibition Against Harassment and Retaliation, as presented. All in favor of approving signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? All right, that policy change has been adopted. That would move us to Policy 506P, Personnel, very similar in nature.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we suspend the rules for a second reading for Policy 506P, Personnel, Prohibition Against Haras, the second, Prohibition Against Harassment and Retaliation.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Any questions? All right, let's proceed to a vote for Policy 506P, Personnel, Prohibition Against Harassment and Retaliation, adopting as presented. All in favor of approving signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? All right, that policy is adopted. That brings us to Finance. Mr. Hester.
Yes. The Finance Committee met at the Frederick County Public Schools Administration Building on March 10th. The meeting was called to order at 4:30 p.m., and a copy of the minutes has been provided to each board member. During the meeting, Mrs. Camery responded to a question submitted by Mr. Comstock regarding the pay differential for special education teachers, and if there are other groups to whom the board may need to consider providing a similar differential. Mrs. Camery then reviewed the budget scenarios presented to the Frederick County Board of Supervisors, as well as the status of the state budget and the possible implications for the School Division. Assistant Finance Director Kristen Anderson provided a, provided a detailed review of the School Nutrition Services Fund, the Textbook Fund, the NREP Operating and Textbook Funds, the Consolidated Services Fund, the Private Purpose Fund, the Health Insurance Reserve Fund, and the Construction Fund. Finally, Mrs. Camery and Mr. Edwards also reviewed responses to questions submitted by Mr. Monk, based on comments made by members of the Board of Supervisors during their meeting on March 9th, 2022. The questions involve presentation of the school board proposed budget, the program capacity at the new Robert E. Ailer Middle School, and the required local effort by standards of quality. The meeting adjourned at 5:14 p.m. Additional details regarding the information covered at the meeting are included in the minutes provided to the board members. Are there any questions from board members about information shared at the Finance Committee meeting held on March 10th? We did have one action item. We did have one action item come out of that. Recommend approval of the minutes from the Finance Committee meeting held on March 10, 2022.
All right, we have a recommendation to approve the minutes presented before us.
I'll second.
It's been seconded by Mr. Lake. Any questions? All right, we proceed to vote to approve the minutes of the Finance Committee meeting. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, those minutes are approved. Mr. Hester.
The Finance Committee met at the Frederick County Public Schools Administration Building on April 14. The meeting was called to order at 4:30 PM, and a copy of the minutes has been provided to each board member. During the meeting, Mrs. Camery reviewed the most recent internal audit conducted on the school division's finances, and noted the audit resulted in no findings. Mrs. Camery also reviewed the responses provided to questions submitted by Mr. Monk by members of the Frederick County Board of Supervisors regarding the school board's proposed budget. After hearing Mrs. Camery provide an overview of the school board's proposed budget and the status of the requested appropriation from the Frederick County Board of Supervisors, the board members in attendance engaged in a discussion regarding cuts that would have to be made to the proposed budget in the event the Board of Supervisors moved forward with scenario C. The committee also discussed directing Dr. Savine to review FY 2022 budget to see if there are any excess funds that would allow the board to offer a bonus to employees during the current fiscal year. Committee members also sought some clarification and additional information from Mr. Monk and Mr. Comstock regarding the conversations they had with some supervisors about the FY 23 budget and the need to keep the entire board informed of those discussions. The meeting adjourned at 6:14 PM. Additional details regarding the information covered at the committee meeting are included in the minutes provided to board members. Are there any questions from board members about information shared at the Finance Committee meeting held on April 14? If there's no questions, there were several action items that came out of this meeting. First one, recommend amending the school board's proposed FY 23 school operating fund to remove the three CTE liaison positions, reinstate the 5% pay increase for administrators, remove the new pay scales for special education teachers, speech therapists, special education instructional assistants, behavior specialists, and behavioral instructional assistants, remove the supplement pay for instructional assistance with a degree, and remove the Grow Our Own FCPS graduate incentive. The proposed reduction will range between 2.1 million and 2.5 million, which will be based upon Frederick County's funding scenario C and potential state revenue reductions which have yet to be determined.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Dr. Savine.
Just a point of clarification for the board. This amendment would be only effective in the event that the Board of Supervisors decided to vote on scenario C.
Thank you. Question related to that, is there a, what is the rationale for moving it forward this evening as opposed to waiting until we have a budget from the Board of Supervisors and then responding to that budget?
It came forward out of the Finance Committee meeting. So it was a motion that was coming before the full board from the Finance Committee. Whether or not the board takes it up would be at your discretion.
But it was my understanding out of that Finance Committee meeting that that would be, this would come forward from them after the Board of Supervisors had met and come to a decision, and that this was just for the sole purpose of beginning planning for staff.
And again, this is only if scenario C is the scenario they go with.
One item that the board could consider is along these lines. Board could reach consensus that in the event that the Board of Supervisors landed with scenario C, you agree in principle in terms of what was recommended through the Finance Committee. But it's not necessary that you take action on that. But certainly, the Finance Committee moved this forward as a recommendation for the full board to consider.
Mr. Chairman, is there...
Mr. Atkins.
Can we table this until after? That way we know exactly what we've got to work with.
Well, we're sort of talking in those terms, I think.
Mr. Lake.
Yeah, I think we're talking in those terms, to gather a consensus, a sort of a headshake agreement without being a formal, you know, move, a formal vote and a formal adoption. Because, I mean, that's true. We could have, we could be voting on something here that's not what we're going to have in a week. And so I would move for the consensus as well.
Mr. Chair, if I may, just...
Dr. Savine.
Additional clarification and a discussion in Finance Committee, and I would like to invite Mrs. Camery, Executive Director of Finance, forward. Part of the discussion was with the delay in the Board of Supervisors' decision not to adopt the budget last week. It does certainly put some pressure on our finance and human resources teams in terms of establishing figures for contracts and so forth. And with the board, in the event that the Board of Supervisors opt to go with scenario C, with the board agreeing in terms of the potential adjustments or cuts that has been recommended by the Finance Committee, it allows our finance team to work on some preliminary things that would better position us to pull an action of the Board of Supervisors to expedite that process, because we are behind right now in terms of preparing our contracts.
Yeah, by waiting until next week to the Board of Supervisors land, if they even land next week, we're already two weeks behind in not only getting the salary scales done and working on contracts from that point, but also Mrs. Reith home being able to post jobs. So what we were looking for is just, at least if we knew where you were heading, then we can go and start making movement basically tonight, and then once it lands Wednesday... so we're already working on salary scales, because you all had a straw vote, remember that? So we've already started working on salary scales. And then once Wednesday hits, then we can already start almost basically posting some of those jobs out there for Mrs. Reith home, and then we're moving forward with contracts. So that was kind of what we were looking at, just kind of knowing what direction you were going in so that we could move forward.
Sure, appreciate that. I guess, as I left the Finance Committee meeting, it was my understanding that that straw poll, you know, that we'd agreed on was what was needed, not necessarily, you know, looking at this, I wasn't under the impression that we would have this motion coming this evening. So I would, my preference, just individually, would be that we'd table that, because I do think that there are some adjustments to those that were proposed by Mr. Hester that could benefit our division, but also recognize the urgency of making sure that we get something there. So return it to the board here of kind of, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Atkins.
I mean, I'm kind of, I know, Ms. Camery, it does put you guys in an awkward position, and it, you know, you guys would be working under pressure. You guys get paid to do that. You know, I'm sorry, but that's the fact. We just got to know what we're working with before we make a decision on it. I would move to table it.
I second that.
All right, Mr. ...
For what? You had a motion on the floor from Mr. Hester that hadn't been seconded, so you need to...
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Is there, how would we like to deal with Mr. Hester's original recommendation? I think it comes from a committee, so it may not require a second, but we'll have one anyway.
Just ask Mr. Hester. Given Dr. Savine's statements, and sort of the mood here of giving them something to work with that isn't a finalized version, do you stay with the motion, or do we move maybe to discuss consensus?
I do think that we need to move forward to give some guidance to the Finance Department because of the bind that we are in from a funding perspective. And again, you know, I know this is scenario C, and that was what was being discussed at the Board of Supervisors meeting. In my opinion, it's either scenario C or fully funding, and we're back to, you know, everything we were looking at. So my opinion coming out of Finance Committee is that we move forward to give our Finance Department enough time, because they do not work under pressure, and, you know, they've got a lot of stuff on their hands, and with our contracts and everything like that, we need to get the ball rolling.
Okay, so let's just be very clear here, please. It sounds like there's two moods here. And so we have a motion, Mr. Hester, is the motion, as you read before, with the different scenarios for the pay adjustments, removing CTE and all that. Is that your motion now?
That's my motion, should the Board of Supervisors land on scenario C.
Okay, but we don't know that. Are we going, I think, is our motion here now to try to gain consensus, to tell the Finance people to move forward? Or we had discussion from two members to say table? So I guess I'm just trying to say, what is our motion?
Okay, to answer your question, it would be on the consensus side, so we can give the Finance Department, they need guidance on how to move forward.
Got it.
So again, if the Board of Supervisors lands differently, then this is null and void.
Okay.
So that's where I stand.
Okay, if you're moving towards consensus, then I second the motion.
All right, we have a motion before us. It's been made and seconded. Discussion, now would be the time, if there were any discussion or potential other motions, to entertain those. Mr. Atkins, you'd made a motion previously. I don't know if that's still under consideration or...
We'll handle what we got on our plate.
Yep.
Okay. Well, with that, disappointed that we're kind of reviewing it in this way tonight, but understand that that's the pleasure of the board. It'd be my recommendation, and I'll move to amend that motion, that we adjust the salary scale for administrators to 4.5%. I think would be the number needed for one instructional CTE liaison position. So that way, we at least are making progress in that area. And if I remember the finance numbers correctly from that meeting, that would allow for that one position. So is that correct, Mrs. Camery? Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, a motion's been made and seconded that we adjust the administrator salary scale, not the teacher or other staff, but administrator salary scale to 4.5%, similar to what it was during the initial budget that was approved by this board to accommodate for one CTE liaison position. That would go from three to one, should this pass. I'll just share that I think our CTE department does an amazing job in full support of the work that they do, and I think this is an opportunity for us to really connect our students to the workplace and allow them some capacity to continue the work that they're doing in those efforts. You know, ultimately, our role in public education is to educate our students and prepare them for their future, and I think this helps us in that way and kind of pushes us forward, and it's something that has been requested, so.
So...
Mr. Lake.
Yes, I have a, I have something on that. So I started to look into this. You mentioned it two meetings ago or something. And so what I did, I went through the process, and I went to see Mary Beth Etchavaria, who is the instructor, person in charge of CTE education. And I asked her about this, about did she need additional CTE coordinators? And she said the request did not come from her, as far as she knew, did not come from her department. So I moved on up the chain, and I talked to Dr. Myers, who is in charge of instruction for secondary education. And Dr. Myers said the same thing. It didn't come from her. It wasn't on her list of priorities. And given, given the, what we're, you know, we have a needs-based budget, there were probably things talked about early on, early on, early on, and then the evaluation starts, the cuts start, and what was a big list got pared down, and the CTE coordinators didn't make her list either. And then finally, to Dr. Savine, and he doesn't know about this request for CTE coordinators either. So I think, you know, given that, if we have the department head, and then the instructional, the instructional lead, and then the superintendent of schools that haven't asked for this, I don't see how we can move forward and take funds away from administration and then just to fund these one positions, when it seems like no one has asked for them. So anyway, I won't be voting to support this.
Sure. Excuse me. Mrs. White.
I do fully support the expansion of the CTE program. I think it will be beneficial for our students. However, our administrators, our principals across the entire district have worked tirelessly the last two years. The last few months, there has been an overwhelming amount of uncertainty for our teachers and our administrators, and it's not fair. I've been into these schools, I've visited with these principals, and they deserve every dime of that percentage increase, and I will not be able to support this.
Thank you, Mrs. White. Other discussion? Mr. Hester.
Mr. Monk, I also will not be supporting that motion. We spent months on this, you know, with our finance meetings, going through all scenarios, and this was a personal want by you, wanting these liaisons at the last minute, so I won't be supporting any of the liaison's positions. Thank you.
Thank you. Other feedback or discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Comstock.
I've been reflecting on this one a little bit since the, since the budget was originally presented and amended to include this, and just like at that time, you know, at the Finance Committee meetings, I was talking about pre-K, and, you know, I think we all have passions, and we all have things that we're passionate about and want to see expand and grow, and I'm very appreciative for your passion for CTE, as I know you're appreciative for my passion for primary, pre-K, and kindergarten, and the kindergarten instructional aids and that type of thing. So I appreciate that we all have differences in different things that are important to us and that resonate with us. I want to, just like I did with pre-K, defer to staff here, you know, at that time, when in the Finance Committee meetings, when we were discussing that extra pre-K classroom, there was a lot of planning that needed to go into it. There was space, there was playground equipment, there's a lot that needed to go into it, and in conversations that I've had since that vote with staff, I feel the same may be necessary for these CTE positions. And I do believe expanding the CTE, and I do believe these programs and these positions are needed, and they're great, but I think that, you know, I think that our staff has already kind of prioritized the budget, and they'll plan that in when they can. So at this time, I think I'm gonna, well, no, I'm going to defer to the same decision I came to with pre-K, and I'm not going to support your motion, so.
Thank you, Mr. Comstock.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Atkins.
So I kind of agree with the rest of the board on this one as well. My wish list is for those CTE, I'd love to have all three of them. But I know with the proposed change in the budget, it just probably wouldn't be possible. I will keep advocating for those CTE positions, and, you know, I hope that, in the next proposal that those, you know, do get put in there, but like some of the other board members, I can't support that one.
Sure, understood. I'll just share as well that, and I know, Mr. Lake, it sounds like you've had conversations. I think sometimes in a scenario where, you know, culture is a concern, sometimes folks aren't able to share as openly as they want, and so I know that there is support for CTE positions in this way, and that will really enhance the product that we are putting out into our community and fully support them. And I think that as each of us talked with constituents as we were running campaigns, CTE somehow always ends up on those banners of things that, you know, we're supporting, and so I think this is an opportunity, the first in a few years that we've actually had, to be able to put action to that. So that's why I put forward the motion, and think that's helpful to Mr. Hester's point about the budget being a long process. I agree, and I'm thankful for how we've... I agree and am thankful for how we've transitioned that. However, this amendment last week during the Finance Committee just came about, and it was the recommendation of one board member. And there wasn't much discussion at that point there. So that's why I'm wanting to put this forward. So we'll proceed to a vote if there's no other discussion on the amendment, which is to transition the administrator only, not the other staff, to, from 5% to 4.5, to include one CTE liaison. Everyone understand what we're voting on?
Yep.
So this would be to approve that. So all in favor of approving that adjustment?
Mr. Chairman, may I recommend a roll call?
Absolutely, yep.
Roll call?
All in favor of doing so, we will go roll call then, Mr. Lake?
No.
Ms. White?
No.
Yes.
Ms. Atkin, Ms. Martin, Mr. Comstock?
No.
Mr. Hester?
No.
Mr. Atkins?
No.
And the chair votes aye, and that amendment fails. Now we have before us the main motion, which is to have Mr. Hester and the Finance Committee's recommendation for the budget, assuming that Scenario C would be one of the options that moves forward. Discussion on that.
Just to make clear, again, we are just, we are giving finance a platform, a sort of a go-ahead. And knowing that this could change, we all hope it will change, but so that they can start their work. So this is not, I think our consensus word is important here because we will, we should be able to come back and then finalize. Once we have a budget from the supervisors, we have to finalize a budget. And so this is not to finalize, this is, I go with the word consensus being very important here.
Mr. Lake, appreciate that context. I guess my question then for Dr. Savine and team would be, if we were to move forward with consensus tonight, and then to your point, any type of finalization that we would want to do, should it land at Scenario C, would that cause a larger issue if there were adjustments to the consensus in the finalization process?
Mr. Chairman, to your, to your point, just for clarity's sake, for the board and the public, as I recall, the discussion with the Finance Committee was in support of fully funding the school board's proposed budget, which was kind of the Scenario A. But in the event that the Board of Supervisors, if they make a decision on the 27th to go with Scenario C, then there was discussion and desire of the Finance Committee for the full board to agree on what adjustments would need to be made in Scenario C. So that would allow finance and our human resources team to move forward with some planning between now and that decision. So that level of consensus and agreement of the board is helpful. If there was a decision to deviate, once the board lands, then there would be additional delays and adjustments that would need to be made by finance and human resources. Mrs. Cameron, if you would like to come forward and provide any additional clarifying statements just for the, for the board?
Yeah, so you will be doing a final approval. What we don't know is the state dollars. So when the state lands, which doesn't look like it's anytime soon, whatever doesn't get approved now, we may be coming back in May when they finalize a budget, if we get additional dollars to then add more things back into the budget. So it's really just helping us get things and running, moving forward, because there is a lot of work, and we are the largest employers. We have 2,200 people we have to do contracts for. And, Mr. Atkins, we work under pressure every day. Thank you. So therefore, it's kind of like we, the contract process takes about six weeks. So that's why, when you think about getting those contracts out, we're two weeks behind. Other school divisions have already getting theirs out and getting teachers to sign and locked in. And that's what we're after, is getting our teachers locked in and signing a contract. Does that help?
No, it does. And I thought that we'd agreed kind of by that roll call on the teacher portion, but didn't, didn't know that that would come forward in the forward of the, kind of the full piece there. I thought it was just that teacher portion and finance. So thank you. Discussion on the recommendation from finance. It's been seconded by Mr. Lake.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Comstock?
I think, I see a lot of familiar faces that were at that Finance Committee meeting, but I wanted to provide some context and just a little, if you, if I may. This is a no-win type of situation if we get Option C, because the items in our budget, I feel, are all extremely necessary. And so either way, and there was a lot of discussion that happened at the Finance Committee meeting that maybe people who weren't present didn't get to see or hear. But, you know, really, it came down to having to, this option, choose between, do we give these much-needed salary enhancements to a group of our staff that were already having a hard time retaining and recruiting? And they're already, I mean, all of our staff are overworked and that kind of, you know, you know, they've been put through a lot. But this group in particular, our special education instructors and support staff, their numbers get worse and worse every year. Every year, we hear about with enrollment, how many students have IEPs and have, need these specialized plans. And so it's a really challenging decision here. And then the other side was the new positions that are also very much in need. So I just want to reiterate for the community that this is, both of these are items that we know we very much need. And it's kind of an impossible decision to choose one over the other. And I want people to know that in having to do that, it's just having to move forward. It's not, not us saying one group is more important than another. But there was a lot of discussion that went behind the staffing needs and the new positions and how those are really needs as well. So I hate that we have to choose between cutting either of them, to be completely frank. But I feel like the discussion that went on there behind the scenes, it, in my eyes, made it clear that, as presented by Mr. Hester from the committee, that this was the option that staff has evaluated and that our division as a whole really needs to be able to continue serving the students. So, sorry.
Mr. Hester?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna follow Mr. Comstock's sentiment. You know, we wouldn't be put in this position if the supervisors would fully fund our needs-based budget. I mean, point blank. I mean, you know, if anybody has a platform they ran on during their, you know, time for, during elections, you know, special education is near and dear to my heart from a personal standpoint. And it kills me to be, even be in this situation where we've got to make these hard decisions. Like Mr. Comstock said, it's a no-win situation. And at the end of the day, you know, we're upset about having to make these hard decisions. And so that's why all of us as board members need to be advocating for Scenario A, which is fully funding our school system. And we wouldn't be put in this situation. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. White?
Unfortunately, while we wait for the Board of Supervisors to make a decision on, on our proposed budget, I am confident that this needs-based budget, that this board, under the guidance of you, Mr. Monk, has put forward, is fair and fiscally responsible. Unfortunately, as the last Board of Supervisors meeting, there is still a few supervisors withholding the support of the budget. This impacts, the impacts of their boards, sorry, indecisiveness has placed great pressures on our teachers and our staff. And that's evidenced by our excellent Director of Human Resources. Their apparent support for Scenario C demonstrates, at least one of their board members put it, simply doesn't care about the effects that these cuts will have on our children, who we all agree have suffered much already as a result of this pandemic. Among other things, their cuts will negate the efforts to provide job-ready skills via the CTE positions that we've had to do away with. Additionally, their cuts will damage our effort to provide speech therapists to our children and support our special needs community, who are the most vulnerable. I have taken the liberty of publicly publishing many of the facts and figures being debated over the last few weeks in an effort to provide transparency to the public about where and how their proposed cuts will negatively affect the youth of our county. I stand in unequivocal support of the needs-based budget that this board proposed, that this board put forward. And I hope that the additional details about where and why the proposed cut will be felt will help encourage the last few holdouts will do the right thing and fully fund our schools.
Thank you, Ms. White. Other discussion from the board? Oh, Mrs. Atkins?
I don't believe...
Or, Ms. Martin, excuse me?
I don't believe that the Board of Supervisors wants to cut teachers or any kind of program. I believe they just, they've asked for something and just give it to them.
We do.
They'll give you all the money. They, they're not interested in trying to hurt people. And just give them what they want. Just find out exactly what they want, give it to them, and I'm sure they'll be okay. That's it.
Thank you. I'll share, I'm concerned about, you know, at that Finance Committee meeting, there was some discussion, there was one idea put forward, and there wasn't really, there was some conversation around positions and the need of them. And Dr. Angelo shared, and I even asked, I think, for some information around that. And then there was a timeline given. My understanding of that timeline was that we would not be voting on this until the Board of Supervisors had landed somewhere. So for that reason, you know, when we're putting positions, which sound as if they are in dire need, and I believe that and understand that, but also recognize that there are some many positions that have gone unfilled. And that was the second question that I asked during that Finance Committee meeting, is how many, how many positions throughout the year have been unfilled? And, because there's been a lot of cost savings that we've been able to utilize. So with that, my intent was to really understand how we could then support our special education and speech, you know, therapists and behavior specialist population in some way, using some of those dollars. So without the ability to do that, I'll be voting against the consensus, not because I don't support our salary initiative for our teachers, because I do. I've said before, I think education's a people business. But I feel like there could be more discussion around supporting those other supports for those special education folks. Any further discussion before we proceed to a vote? And we'll do a roll call for this one, Mr. Lake, if that's okay with you? All right, Mr. Atkins?
No.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Mr. Comstock?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
No.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Mr. Lake?
Yes.
And the chair votes no, that consensus passes from the Finance Committee. Thank you, Mr. Hester, I think you've got a few more items.
Yeah, we did have another action item come out of that. Recommend directing the superintendent to review FY 2022 budget to see if there are excess funds that would allow the board to offer a bonus to employees during the current fiscal year.
All right, we've heard the recommendation, do...
Second.
All right, it's been seconded by Mr. Comstock. Discussion on this?
Our people have been through a rough couple of years. And anything, small, large, whatever we can do, I think we need to make an effort to do that, to recognize them, to show them that we're here, we support them. And so I'm, that's it.
Yeah.
Mr. Lake?
Mr. Chairman? The school division is 2,300 staff employees. That's what it is. In certain discussions, it's not about, you know, how many students we have or how many schools we have. We have 2,300 employees that we need to have show up every day. This whole exercise that we've been through in the last two or three weeks has done, I mean, devastating effect on morale in the school division. And quite frankly, anything that we can do, if there's a, if there's an employee that's on the fence, that may be thinking about, do I work here next year? Or do I just drive literally a mile down the road and get a seven, an eight, or as Clark County is proposing, 10? I mean, what are we doing here? So any incentive, any small thing that we can do to try to keep them here and try to keep the whole thing together, we definitely need to do. There are, every year, we have sources of unused funds. We could have spent less on gasoline. Bus tires could have come in cheaper. We could have had a roofing contract that came in under budget. Everybody loves that phrase, under budget. And so having excess funds is something we go through every year. And then we identify some high priorities. And so I think this year, given what has happened and given the effect on our employees, I think we just need to go and move and try to make some of them feel wanted and feel like they want to stay here. So I'm very much in favor of seeing what funds can be identified and how we use it that way. And I'll just add one more comment. For the discussion earlier, I mean, you know, there are all these different categories of instruction that are so sorely needed. We, for, the whole time I've been on the board, we've talked about special ed, about the need for special ed, about how hard it is to keep special ed, and also science teachers as well, but special ed especially, because they go through a whole different deal. Special ed is a different deal in itself. This morning, I was at Sherrando High School for an awards program, and there was two special ed students getting an award. Their aides brought them in, were with them every step of the way, explained to them what was going on and why all these people were applauding and clapping and making all this noise. And I just, I just sat there and watched, and I said, you know, this is what it's all about. And, and so special ed, all the IEPs, we can't do enough for it. But at this time, we're, we're talking about the big picture. There are really 2,300 employees. And no matter who it is, if it's in the cafeteria, if it's a bus driver or a custodian, instruction in front of the class, or the principal, the principals, we got, we got to do what we can. We got, and we would be, we wouldn't be doing our jobs if we couldn't do everything we can to literally, in my personal view, save this division. And so I would definitely be voting to support this. Thank you.
Mr. Hester?
I'm gonna share the same sentiment. You know, our employees make this great school system, each and everyone, each and every teacher, each and every aide, everybody across the board. And we can't, you know, the raise that we're gonna be giving them, you know, isn't enough. I wish we could give them all a blank check for what they've been going through the last couple of years. And I can't thank, thank you guys enough. I mean, I've, you know, I sit at home and just think how lucky we are to have the school system that we have. You guys have heard me say it. I truly believe we've got the best administration, best superintendent, best school system in the state of Virginia. And like Mr. Lake said, we need to do what we need to do to make sure we keep our teachers here. And this, this bonus will certainly help, I hope. Thank you.
Other discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Atkins?
I'm excited to see if we can find those extra funds to, you know, give that incentive to our teachers. You know, I think we do have a plethora of great teachers out here, and I'd like to keep those teachers around. Anything we can do, you know, I definitely have to agree with Mr. Hester and Mr. Lake on this, that, you know, we should be able to provide it. I'd like to, you know, make sure it does go to everybody out there, you know, to include our bus drivers. You know, they, they definitely are literally where the rubber meets the road. So, you know, with that being said, I will be voting yes on that.
And I do want to follow, we had discussed, this is gonna go to all employees across the board. That's how I directed it at the Finance Meeting. And every single employee is included in this, great.
All right, yep, I agree with lots of what's been said. I would ask that if there's a way that we could figure out, you know, for those positions that, you know, that was shared with us earlier, you know, some of those lower salary positions, are there ways that we can make sure it's really meaningful for those roles? That would be really great for us, to include aide and, and bus drivers and nutrition staff and the like. All right, let's get to a vote if there's no further discussion. All right, let's get to a vote if there's no further discussion. Mr. Lake, I see you.
Okay, so, so we've had some discussion. Can we repeat the motion?
Absolutely, Mr. Hester, you want to repeat the motion?
Recommend directing the superintendent to review the FY 2022 budget to see if there are excess funds that would allow the board to offer a bonus to employees during the current fiscal year.
Second.
Yep, so we.
We have a third.
Got a third, fourth, fifth, so we've had discussions, seeing no further discussion, we'll move to a vote. It sounds like we can just do a voice vote here, all in favor of approving that recommendation as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you, Mr. Hester, I think one more.
Last action item, recommend approval of the minutes from the Finance Committee meeting held on April 14th, 2022.
Second.
All right, motion's been made, the second that we approve the minutes from the Finance Committee meeting on April the 14th, 2022. Discussion, all right, all in favor of approving the minutes as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you, Ms. Hester. Next item, K, Student Conduct and Support Committee report. Mrs. White?
Yep, sorry. The student conduct, the student conduct and support committee met at the Frederick County Public Schools Administration, Administration Building on March 22nd. The meeting was called to order at 5:15 PM, and a copy of the minutes has been provided to each board member. During the meeting, the committee went into closed session to review and discuss individual student matters that would involve specific students and particular information contained in their scholastic records, including violations of the Code of Student Conduct pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711A2. After reconvening and certifying the closed session, the committee voted unanimously to expel student A for 365 days. The matter does not require further action by the full board. The committee meeting adjourned at 6:17 PM. We do have an action item coming out of that. I recommend approval of the minutes from the Student Conduct and Support Committee meeting held on March 22nd, 2022.
And I second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the Student Conduct and Support Committee meeting that was held on March 22nd. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote on those minutes, all in favor of approving them as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you, Mrs. White. Next, we have our Instruction Committee report.
Yes. The Instruction Committee met at the Frederick County Public Schools Administration Building on March 31st. The meeting was called to order at 5:30 PM, and a copy of the minutes has been provided to each school board member. During the meeting, Supervisor, Supervisor of Career and Technical Education, Mary Beth Ettravaria, I can never say that right. I, I, I apologize. Reviewed Carl D. Perkins Annual Plan for 2022-23. Here we go again, Mrs. Ettravera also reviewed the 2022-23 Comprehensive Local Needs Assessment Template. Staff then reviewed proposed changes to Policy 331P, Policy 412P, and Policy 623P. The media, the meeting adjourned at 6:05 PM. Do any board members have any questions about what was covered at the Instruction Committee held last week? If none, there were several action items that came out of this. Recommend approval of the Carl D. Perkins Annual Plan for 2022-23.
All right, we have a recommendation for approval of the plan.
I have a second.
We have a second as well, any discussion on the Carl Perkins CTE plan?
Can I just add a comment? It's, it was like a hundred pages or something, but every board member, at some point in time, you should set aside that two or three hours and actually read the Carl Perkins, it's fascinating. It is, it is a fascinating program, has to do with the CTE, it is, it's spot on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lake, other discussion? All right, we'll proceed to approve the Carl Perkins Plan for the 2022-2023 school year. All in favor of doing so, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The Perkins Plan is approved.
Next action item, recommend adoption of Policy 331P Instruction Gifted Education.
Second.
All right, motion's made, and seconded that we approve Policy 331P Instruction Gifted Education as presented. Discussion on Policy 331P.
Was there any discussion at the committee? I'm reading through it now, but was there any discussion at the committee or any context for this?
It really was just coming down from the state again, wording. It was minimal changes in regards to each of these policy adjustments.
I would just add to Mr. Hester's comments that the proposed changes came from the VSA.
Yes.
And they were reviewed by Dr. Angelo as well as Dr. Greathouse.
All right, any further discussion? All right, seeing that, we'll proceed to vote on the approval of Policy 331P Instruction Gift, Instruction Gifted Education. All in favor of approving, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that policy passes.
Next action item, recommend adoption of Policy 412P Students, Student-Athlete Sudden Cardiac Arrest.
All right, we have a motion and a second from Ms. White, thank you, for Policy 412P Students-Athlete Sudden Cardiac Arrest. Discussion?
Again, VSA, this appears to be a new policy.
This is a new policy, it's driven by action taken, it was either last year or the year before. It's been, it's been a time coming and going through the process in Richmond. Again, Dr. Angelo, Mr. Bach, and Mrs. Unhock have reviewed this, and Mrs. Unhock is prepared to implement this.
And, and I'll add, the best example, it, it was similar to like concussion protocols. And so this is where there's set guidelines in regards to, you know, cardiac arrest and, and the, you know, process to come back. So it's very similar to that concussion protocol that we've got.
And to follow up with what Mr. Hester just said, it also covered, you know, the signs and symptoms of it, you know, to, to address that with, I think it was parents and, and then the athletic directors and coaches.
Thank you for that context.
Thank you, all right. Further discussion on Policy 412P? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote on the approval of Policy 412P Students-Athlete Sudden Cardiac Arrest as presented. All in favor of doing so, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Next action item, recommend adoption of Policy 623P Community Relations Service Animals in Public Schools.
All right, we have a motion and a second from Ms. White, thank you, to approve Policy 623P Community Relations Service Animals in Public Schools. Discussion on this?
Mr. Chairman, before the Vice Chairman asks a question, I got him.
I already read this one, I'm okay with this one.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's just a simple pen and ink change. You know, it's just kind of covering the, the animals.
So rubber meets the road and pen and ink change, okay.
I got, I got a million of them.
All right, discussion of this policy? All right, we'll vote on the policy to approve, or approval of Policy 623P Community Relations Service Animals in Public Schools as presented, all in favor of doing so, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Wonderful.
I have a question. I know everybody's already voted, but what if somebody's allergic to these animals?
Ms., Dr. Angelo?
We have not encountered that, and if we encountered it, we would have to find ways to mitigate that issue.
Well, there's a lot of, a lot of children that are allergic to.
We have very, very few. We have very few service, I mean, I'm not aware of any service animals currently that we have in our buildings.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms., Dr. Savan?
To the point in terms of allergies and so forth, certainly if there, if we had a case, we would work through the school administration, student support services to best meet the needs of that individual student.
And from my limited understanding of this topic, so I'm probably delving into something I shouldn't, but there are requirements around service animals with. Yep, so even if there were some allergies, there would still need to be accommodations made by the division in some, some way.
Okay, I'll vote yes then.
All right. We've got consensus, perfect, so we'll move to, am, board member comments, are there any?
Actually, we have one more. We.
Hold the minutes, okay.
Last action item, recommend approval of the minutes from the Instruction Committee meeting held on March 31st, 2022. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hester, we have a second. All right, it's been made, made and seconded that we approve the minutes from the Instruction Committee meeting. Discussion, seeing none, we'll proceed to vote on those minutes as presented, all in favor of doing so, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, great. Now we'll move on to Mr. Hester, your point, board member comments, am, are there any?
Nope, look like you're jumping the gun.
Go ahead.
All right.
Mr. Atkins?
All right, mine are always kind of lengthy, but as, as everybody knows, I take notes kind of to address some of the questions that, that come up throughout the meeting. Ms. Williams, one of my Ms. Williams. Ms. Williams, you asked about CRT and how I kind of beat on that, that drum a lot. Well, you know, Mr. Sparkman's point, it is kind of, you know, the light issue of it, it's, there is equity. We have, and we, you know, Mr. or Dr. Ettravaria and Dr. Meyer were definitely heading up that program. So if the program's not there, why do we have those positions? Furthermore, why do we have the textbooks? You know, it's, it's not a class that's taught, it's just a way of teaching. If you'd like to see any of that information I have, I'd be happy to share it with you. And there were teachers and students that did go attend over at Lord Fairfax and I believe Shorando classes on this. Next, you know, just I didn't hit everybody, but going down the list. Ms. Jett asked about, you know, why don't we just pass the budget and then come back and rework it? There's some of that, but the Finance Committee and Mr. Hester's done a great job of kind of dissecting it. Went through a lot of hours and, and Ms. Camery as well. And it kind of gets put in there, and then we kind of vote on it as a board, the proposed budget. And if you look at my Board of Supervisors comments, while I did, I was the one that didn't vote for the proposed budget. I did vote for all the funding, or, you know, I think we should go with all the funding. I just don't like how it's being divided up. As far as Mr. Schaefer, I couldn't agree with you more. There were a lot of students that were segregated during those times, you know, with the COVID and the mask and everything, and I, I do think it is kind of sad that, you know, there were teachers and administrators who didn't come up and stand up for those kids, but now they'll come out and, you know, beat on the drum for the budget. You know, let's see who else. The other Ms. Williams, I appreciate all you do for the students and the staff out here with FCEA. However, you did bring up advocate, advocacy. Once again, I didn't hear you advocate for those students during those times when they were segregated. With that being said, that finishes my comments.
All right, other board member comments, Mr. Lake?
Yeah, I have something actually I was gonna cover, but Mr. Atkins, our, our next battle after the budget, without question, is gonna be CRT. And the message, message that we need to get forward to everyone, there is a difference, sir, between equity and CRT. Okay? If we are not going to treat everyone equal, we're racist. It's plain and simple. But CRT, this graduate level class in the law schools, I will tell you, from 10 years on this board, is nowhere in our schools. Okay? All right. Let me get to, let me get to my thing here. I'm on the board at Lord Fairfax, soon to be Laurel Ridge, June 4th, actually, if you want to come out for the ceremony. They gave us a snapshot at our last board meeting that has to do with dual enrollment for all of our high schools. There's eight jurisdictions for the community college, and so this snapshot goes through all eight of the jurisdictions and gives all kinds of figures and numbers, and of course, no one here cares about any of them, except for Frederick County. So let me just briefly, I mean, there's, this is a fascinating document, but let me just briefly go through our three high schools and tell you some of the things that's going on. First of all, we only have figures up through last year because this year isn't over yet. And so people haven't graduated, people haven't completed all their credits, whatever, whatever. So we got James Wood High School, last year, graduation had six students who received an associate's degree from Lord Fairfax before they graduated from James Wood. Two others had their associate's degree in science. Another 26 had certificates of some kind of general education, like HVAC, like plumbing, like nursing, and, and the, the, you know, the trades stuff. Millbrook, Millbrook had 11 associate degrees in general studies. Now again, let me repeat, at graduation, they, they were already juniors in college. That's what this means. They had eight students who had associate's degrees in science, and they had one who had a, a degree in computer science. They had 26 certificate students in general education. And I've got the list of all the classes here, but I'm sure not gonna go through that. Shorando High School had 14 students graduating on graduation day, juniors in college. They had six others who had an associate's degree in some science. They had 47 others who had certificate, degree, certificates in some other general education. So that's what's going on in, in our, in our school systems with dual enrollment. There is advanced placement, advanced placement means a college course. Advanced placement is a form of dual enrollment, but not all dual enrollment is advanced placement, like when you take HVAC. There is no college level, HVAC, HVAC is HVAC. And so that's, that's kind of a, something that a lot of people don't understand. Just two more numbers here, Mr. Chairman. The annual number of dual enrollment students who were earning awards. James Wood last year had 38, Millbrook 37, Shorando 68. And the total number of awards to these dual enrollment students, James Wood 60, Millbrook 69, Shorando 105. Frederick County's total number of college-level credits, now, you know, not college-level, I don't mean AP, I mean something in dual enrollment, 10,774 credits for our three high schools. I have, so this, this page here is a list of the different classes. Would you believe the most popular class, United States History II? 200, 239 students, Frederick County students, took Lord Fairfax's United States History II. Let's see, let's pick out another one. How about College Composition 1? That sounds exciting. 236 students, College Composition 2, 224 students, that's pretty good. U.S. Government 1, 216. So anyway, I, I've got all the eight jurisdictions, it's a great paper to see how we compare. I'm, I'm from the old school, the old days, and of course, I had to jump right over and see what Hanley did. Not too well. But I will tell you, my last comment, I promise, Mr. Chairman, my last.
Yeah, you're getting in trouble with Winchester City over there, Mr. Lake.
Oh, it's all right. Tell them to send their best. The last, the last page is private schools and home schools. Very interesting reading. And so what I gather when I ask some questions is, is that the homeschool community is challenged by certification of their instructors to teach college-level classes, and so they have that challenge. Private schools as well, their certification of their instructors is a challenge for them. So anyway, it was, it's just, you know, it's just good to see, you know, what our kids are doing and how many of them are involved in this, and how many of them are taking advantage. So let me close with that, taking advantage. A two-year, these kids that are graduating this year with their associate's degree are gonna spend about 80. gonna spend about $1,800. Two years of college at the University of Virginia, $54,000. And that's real. And, and because of the Guaranteed Acceptance Program now, every four-year school, we discussed this at the board meeting, every four-year school in Virginia, except for VMI, accepts these programs. And when the students sign up for dual enrollment, they are told, absolutely, this class is under guaranteed acceptance, that you're not wasting your time and money. So 1,800 bucks, 54 grand. That's, that's dual enrollment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lake. Mr. Hester?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The, the last couple of months have been very hard, you know, going through the budget process, and I do want to thank this board for the, for coming to the, to the meetings and having great discussion. You know, our county can fully fund Scenario A, and that is what we need. That is what we need to go forward. So as you all have heard, I will, I will continue advocating for Scenario A and doing everything that I can until we, we get that. I mentioned this in the, in the wintertime in regards to winter sports, but now we're in the spring with totally different sports. And the last couple weeks, months, you know, I, I sit at home when I'm not reading school board stuff, and I see all the great success that our athletes are having recently. I mean, we've had shutouts. We've had, you know, from graduates from, from Frederick County. Tiffany, I love watching, seeing what your daughter's doing down in Florida. I am biased towards soccer, so I do follow a lot of soccer. You know, and then all the great, I, I mean, just every single day, we have sports athletes that are just doing amazing, amazing stuff. So I just wanna give kudos to our students to be able to have that lifestyle to succeed in the classroom and outside the classroom, because that is very important. But it's just neat to see what we're doing within the school system, but then seeing our graduates making, you know, shockwaves across the nation and colleges and things like that. So it's just been really fun to watch.
Thank you, Mr. Hester. Other comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Comstock?
So I just wanna again circle back to this. I know I said it earlier, but I, I want to send a very clear message to our people at all levels. Every staff member, every faculty member, every student, that we see you, we appreciate you, we support you, and this board is, is fighting for you. The, I think the beauty of this board is our different backgrounds, our skill sets and our passions, and, and there's always gonna be differing opinions, thoughts, strategies, methods, but we as a board have a responsibility to be unified in our common goal of providing the children of this community the best education we can. And I, I just wanna put it out there for everybody, you know, we, I know the decision's not made, but I feel like we as a board, we need to be relentlessly united in our support of the people we employ and the little people we're charged, we're taking care of and educating every day. And I think we should all be 100% standing behind the budget that we requested, and I would ask every member of this board to do this over the next week. That's that, you know, there's a lot of talk about, well, I'll save it for the board meeting. I'll save it for the board meeting, never mind. I'm done.
More to come, Mr. Comstock, it sounds like. Other comments? Sure, I, I wanna share as well my appreciation for our staff. I've said it, I said it tonight, I say it just about all the time, that I feel that education is a people business. So it's disheartening to me that our people are hurting and in fear of what has occurred over the past few weeks. And so I know, as I learned of some of those things, it was disappointing to know that the impact that that would have at the levels, the school level ultimately. And, you know, Mr. Comstock and I and others on this board, I feel have, have been working to share any information and to meet with anyone at any time as best we can to promote and advocate for our school system, as well as to educate about our school system, which I think is probably been the most fruitful of all of our conversations, is sharing information about what goes on for those who maybe aren't as privy to it as those who sit up here. So I wanna reiterate my support for our school system and my time that I've invested, and I think others have invested as well, in supporting our school system and providing all the information that we can, as well as our budget. And there's also some conversation around a request or proposed request that I made that only I speak on behalf of the board, and I wanna share that that's just simply not accurate. I think Mr. Comstock can attest in those meetings that it's been my purview and what I shared with other members of the Board of Supervisors, that anyone on this board at any time can reach out and advocate for our schools, and I hope that they take those calls, and I would expect them to do so, and that's their prerogative. So I recognize that that may not be what's put out there, but that's what actually occurred. And I've continued to encourage Board of Supervisors members, even as late as today, and our school board members as late as today, to continue to advocate for our school system, the budget, and our staff ultimately. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
All right, we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor of adjourning, say if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned.